We're on the air. I'll call the Land and Dairy Planning Board meeting to order for November 8th, 2023. I just want to point out for everyone who is here that this room has two exits. They're on the right-hand side of the audience. They're at the front of the room, in the back of the room. If we have an emergency need to evacuate, we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you. Go outdoors, move away from the building, and don't come back in to our fire officials. I've instructed us to do so. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise. We'll pledge allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, founded in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't know if Jeff is coming or not, but Jeff's not here. I'll appoint Tony to vote for Jeff until Jeff arrives. And we don't have any ex officios here, so there's six of us present. That's the full regular members of the board, and there's one more than a quorum, so we do have a quorum, and we will proceed with tonight's meeting. First round of the meeting is administrative board work, and then we have a continued lot line adjustment for the next item of business. And then we have a public hearing on a application for a conditional use permit. This is the water line that goes from Woodmont Commons up to the Penachucks Water Tank. And then we are having a work session where we're going to be discussing, I think, two zoning amendments. And that will be it tonight. Okay, we'll move to administrative board work. There's no minutes to approve. We did get minutes out. They're at the last minute. I know Anne had some changes. I've got some changes on them also, so we aren't going to do those tonight. If everything is put together by next, well, it'll be our December first meeting. In December, we'll do the minutes. And I hope that tonight's meeting minutes get out fairly expeditiously so that we can properly review them. Regional impact determinations. Do we have anything, Kelly?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
None this evening. And discussions with town staff? Anything, John?
No, not this evening.
Everything's going good?
Everything's going well.
All set for tomorrow?
Tomorrow, Thursday?
Yeah. Good. Okay, Ben, anything?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Kelly?
I'll reserve my time for the work session.
Okay, okay, because we'll have plenty there. Anything from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to say that our new nameplates are quite trendy and sporty. I like it a lot. However, I had a special gold one. Now I'm the same as everybody else. I don't like that. So I'd like to see if we can find my gold one. If I could get that back, I might even...
I'll have it framed for you.
I might even donate the money, however much it costs.
They melted it down so everybody else could get a new one.
Yeah, I noticed a nice white...
Anyway, thank you to whoever did that. It looks very, very nice, very professional. And you can proceed. Thank you.
Good job. If we could find yours, Tony, we'll give it to you as a souvenir. Let's see. I don't have anything. We will proceed right to old business then. We have a public hearing on application for a formal review of a lot line adjustment to adjust the lot lines of Tax Map 17, Lot 5-5, 5 Kitty Hawk Landing, Tax Map 17, Lot 11, 595 Mammoth Road, Tax Map 17, Lot 13, 603 Mammoth Road, Zone Industrial 1, and Agricultural Residential 1, and Commercial 2. Land and Dairy Holdings LLC and Tebow Corporation of New Hampshire and Tebow Corporation of New England are the owners, and Ken Zalinski is the applicant. This has been continued from our meeting of October 4th, 2023. And I think there was one item anyway, maybe some other items that we needed to catch up on. So this has been accepted as complete, and we will proceed with the hearing. You gentlemen, just identify yourselves for our records, please. You do look familiar, so I know you've been here before. But this, this will make it official and do the presentation. We'll go to staff for staff's input. We'll go to the board for the board's input, and we'll go to the public for their input.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dick Anagnos with the development team. Next to me is Nick Golan from TF Moran, our engineer. And in the back of the audience is Ken Zalinski. Thank you for hearing us again tonight. We're here again for the simple lot line adjustment that we discussed last meeting, and we have a much simpler presentation with respect to drawing it on a map for you. And are we able to put that up there?
What's going on with this one?
Yeah, and that's...
It's dark in here. It's like super dark in here.
Yep. Yes, please.
It might take a moment or two.
We may need... Do you want me to try and angle that so you guys can see that better? That one's off, too.
There we go.
Want to hit that?
Where is it?
Underneath.
Those buttons right there. There it is.
How many planning board members does it take?
It'd have been scary if Arc could turn it on, but I couldn't.
There were some buttons there.
All right, I think we're in good shape now.
Tubes to warm up.
All right, the graphic behind you, I think, better illustrates what we were trying to previously have approved at the last meeting. The lot to the left, which is encircled in blue, is the parent lot. The two portions directly to the right are portions of Lot 11 and 13, which would then be consolidated with the parent lot, Lot 17, 55. It's approximately 20 acres that's being combined into that parent lot. So it goes from approximately 26 and 1/2 acres to a little bit more than 46. We've had the opportunity to address a fair amount of the review comments. I think we're in much better shape, much of which was script errors or otherwise. We'll be very short and sweet tonight. If there's questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
And just for the record, the right-hand properties are the Tebow properties, and the left-hand property is the Zalinski property. The back of the Tebow properties are being consolidated into the Zalinski property.
Thank you, Dick.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is one waiver request before you this evening. The board will recall that when you accepted the application as complete on October 4th, you waived eight items for acceptance only. Those have been moved to conditions of approval. However, one waiver remains, and that is to waive this in its entirety, and it's related to the delineation of wetlands on the entirety of the parcels. Staff does not have any issue with this waiver request. Additionally, as the applicant indicated, they made the correction that I had highlighted last time regarding a parcel that was associated with a previously approved subdivision, so the plan accurately reflects all of the parcels accurately, as in legally reflects the parcels as they stand today. I don't have anything additional to add beyond that, but John might.
Okay. I will do the board. Anne?
Well, you said you want to consolidate the lots. I understand one of them is zoned... Well, two of them. Well, one of them is going to be... One of them is zoned AR1, another one's commercial, and I think, and another one is industrial?
Yep, there is multiple zoning.
So you're going to combine into an AR1 zone, or what?
There'll be no changes to the zoning designation, so this would stay as is.
Really?
It's the parcels themselves, the area that would be consolidated.
Okay. The area will be consolidated, but we can have separate zoning within that, those lots?
Yes, we can.
Okay. That might have cleared up any question I had, and the uses will be applicable to those zoning areas.
That's correct. Otherwise, we'd have to seek relief or otherwise in order to cite those uses within those zones.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
All set, Anne?
I'm all set.
Tony?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
No questions, Mr. Chair?
All set, Mr. Chairman?
I'm good, sir.
Jason?
I have no questions.
Okay. Are there any butters to this, well, basic consolidation of lots, lot line adjustment? Or anyone from the public have any questions, comments, or concerns? I do not see anyone. What I'll do is bring it back to the board. We have one waiver to address, and then the plan itself.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the waiver request justification. Being an alternative site planning and building design approach meets the design objectives stated in the regulations equally well or better than would compliance with the regulations.
Second?
Motion by Al. Second by Jake. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Extentions? And Chair votes affirmative. Motion carries. The waiver has been granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant conditional approval of the lot line adjustment to adjust the lot lines of Map 17, Lot 5-5, 5 Kitty Hawk Landing, Map 17, Lot 11, 595 Mammoth Road, Map 17, Lot 13, 603 Mammoth Road, Zoned Industrial 1, Agricultural Residential, and Commercial. Land and Dairy Holdings LLC and Tebow Corporation of New Hampshire and Tebow Corporation of New England owners and Ken Zalinski applicant in accordance with plans prepared by TF Moran Incorporated dated September 13, 2023, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within two years and prior to plan's signature, and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated November 8, 2023.
Motion by Al.
Second.
Second by Jake. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Extentions? Chair votes affirmative, and the lot line adjustment plan has been conditionally approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, we appreciate your time.
You're very welcome. Okay, next we have is a public hearing on an application for a conditional use permit for the proposed 2,057 square feet of wetland impacts to construct a transmission main allowing for the distribution of potable water from the proposed water tank on Tax Map 10, Lot 142, to the proposed booster station on Tax Map 10, Lot 41, 36 Pillsbury Road, Tax Map 10, Lots 42, Zone Woodmont Commons PUD, Penachuck East Utility Incorporated, Cara Mark Fillion applicant, and Pillsbury Realty Development LLC is the owner. And welcome, gentlemen. And we have to determine completeness of the application.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Staff is recommending that the application be accepted as complete.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And second by Jake for completeness of the application. Any discussion on the completeness by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Extentions? Chair votes affirmative, and the application has been approved as complete. What this does is start the public hearing and also the 65-day timeframe in which this board has to render a decision. So just identify yourselves for our records, please, gentlemen, and we will proceed.
Thank you. Trevor Yenda with Meridian Land Services, and I'm here with Mark Fillion from Penachuck Water as well.
Welcome.
So I guess just as a brief background, we were here before you guys in December of 2022 for really three projects: the tank, the transmission main, and the booster station. And at the time, we did receive a conditional use permit for the impacts to the buffer for the water line. This application is to seek an additional CUP approval for some direct temporary wetland impacts. And I'll get into a little bit more why we're at this point shortly. So the transmission main, there's two points, and Kelly, could you go... or sheet one of the plan set? So the two areas highlighted in blue on Map 10, Lot 42, is the primary corridor where the main runs. The location of it hasn't changed since we were before you guys last, but at that time, we had proposed trying to avoid some direct wetland impacts by directional drilling in those two locations. Since that time, there's been additional subsurface exploration by Penachuck, and it's found that it's shallow to ledge in those two locations, so that drilling's not a feasible option. So the purpose of this application is to permit the direct temporary wetland impacts associated with the more traditional trenching and hammering of the ledge to install this water line. Again, the location has not changed from what was originally approved, and we've submitted the state wetland permits, and we were before the Conservation Commission in October, and that was received favorably by them. As far as the criterion on the CUP, we feel that it still meets the four criteria in terms of avoidance and minimization. It's essential to the productive use of the land, not so zoned. It's going to increase the resiliency and redundancy of the existing water system. And again, these impacts are all temporary in nature. They would be restored to their original condition and reseeded appropriately. That's the gist of it. Happy to answer any questions. Mark, do you have anything else to add?
Covered it pretty well.
Okay.
Okay, what we'll do is get input from staff, and then I'll go to the board, and then we'll go to the public. So Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the applicant indicated, they went before the Conservation Commission back in October, and the commission did recommend approval of the CUP. Staff is also recommending a conditional approval this evening for the permit.
Okay. We'll go to the board. Start the other end. Jason?
I have no questions. Your role is it? Yes, thank you.
Jake?
Mr. Chair, I'm good right now.
Okay.
All set.
Lynn?
So Kelly or Ben, who has the responsibility to go out and make sure the wetlands get restored properly for the project, or before the project is signed off by the town?
John?
Gentleman right over there. Does your wetlands permit require them to provide a report at the conclusion of this as well?
I don't believe so. I think the standard terms and conditions of the state wetlands permit require that it be carried out in accordance with the plans. I am not certain on the quote-unquote "follow-up" or certification of that.
So I didn't ask that question to stump Trevor, but again, depending on the impacts and the quality of the wetlands, again, some of them, they require, again, a wetland scientist to go out there and produce reports at certain times of following the construction of whatever's occurred out there. In this instance, it doesn't sound like they're going to require it because it's probably a minimum impact.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's not a major impact permit. Some of the stuff that we do as a town, it's major impact, and we follow up with subsequent observations with that. So during the construction, the town would go out there and inspect it, as well as Meridian and Penachuck would be required to observe and determine whether or not the, you know...
So it would be you or the building department that would be going out and doing?
Myself.
Yourself, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Good. Thank you. All set, Lynn? Tony?
All set, thank you.
Anne?
All set.
All set. Are there any butters, or anyone from the public have any questions, comments, or concerns in regards to this conditional use permit? And Ray? You can step up to the microphone, please. Officially, I just need your name and address.
Ray Brezlin, 3 Gary Drive. I just want to say that where there is wetland impact, I would think that someone would go out there and do sightwalks. Has anyone from the town done sightwalks on the property? Can I ask that question?
I've done one.
Yes.
I've walked the property.
You've walked the whole property?
Yeah.
And just one other question. There were wetland permits issued by the State of New Hampshire?
Trevor, have they been issued yet?
We've submitted the application. They have not been issued yet.
They have not been issued by the state?
Not yet. We expect to hear back from the state within the next few weeks.
Okay.
I would assume, John, before they do any work, they have to have their state approvals, correct?
Yep, that's why...
Before these plans will be signed. Correct. Thank you.
Exactly. That's why we're recommending conditional approval.
It'll be a condition on the plans.
Correct. Exactly. Thank you.
But this is going to be voted on tonight.
But conditionally, Ray. Just conditional.
It'll be a conditional approval.
Conditional.
Pending the state's approval.
It only becomes official when the plan's assigned, and they have to have all the conditions satisfied to our staff's content.
Right, right. Okay.
Nothing slips by.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify that the state permits have not been issued at this point.
Right. We don't require them to have the permits in hand at the time of conditional approval.
Right.
But it becomes a condition, and for the plan to be signed and approved, they have to have the permits in hand and demonstrate that to us.
Yeah. Even though the Conservation Commission has, at least conditionally, approved it moving forward.
They have made a recommendation to us to, you know, move ahead with it.
Right. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anyone else? I do not see anyone else. I'll bring it back to the board. We just need to handle the conditional...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant approval of the conditional use permit for 2,057 square feet of wetland impacts to construct a transmission main allowing for the distribution of potable water from the proposed water tank on Map 10, Lot 142, to the proposed booster station on Map 10, Lot 41, 36 Pillsbury Road, Map 10, Lot 42, Zone Woodmont Commons PUD, Penachuck East Utility Incorporated, Cara Mark Fillion applicant, and Pillsbury Realty Develop LLC owner.
Okay, motion by Al.
Second.
Second by Jake. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Extentions? Chair votes affirmative. Motion carries, and you have a, you know, conditionally approved conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Let's see. Next, we have our workshop, and there's no public input on this. This is for the board to do its own discussion. So we have, I think, two zoning amendments that are being proposed by staff. So we will proceed with staff input to us. And I think the first one we'll have is the performance overlay district. That is both on Route 102 and Route 28. And those were enacted back in 2002, and at that time, times were definitely different. There was a concern about big box stores, and this was intended to keep the, more of a, like a local tree canopy setback colonial-looking type of setup, and the intent was for it to be temporary. Of course, anything with government, if it's temporary, it becomes permanent. So here we are, 20 years later, discussing something that's going to be temporary. And I think it, the way times are now, it gets to the point where it's hindering what we want to develop. So I will turn it over to Kelly. There's more history on this, but I don't want to bore anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this evening, we'll actually be going over three zoning amendments, but I'll certainly take up the overlays first, if that's...
Yes.
...the world of board. So just to provide some brief history, you've done a nice job already, Mr. Chair, but these overlay districts, that is, the Route 102 and 28 Performance Overlay Districts, were first adopted in 2002. The intent at that time was to assist with keeping these corridors first in alignment with, again, at that time, the 1997 master plan, as well as keeping management of the growth during that time period. So big box stores were looking to come in to both the 28 area and 102 area. We also had the winding of I-93 at that time, and so really, the town was looking to navigate what that development was going to do, and so they had the overlay districts put in place. Most recently, in 2019, previous planning staff brought forward a proposal to remove these overlay districts. However, that proposal included an additional commercial performance overlay. That never actually came to fruition as an amendment, and so it never was adopted. So that brings us to today, and right now, we're looking to discuss with the board the complete removal of the Route 28 and Route 102 overlay districts. As the board's aware, we've experienced significant growth since 2002 and since that 1997 master plan was put in place. And in fact, we operate under a new master plan, the 2013 plan, which actually identifies both of these overlay district areas as retrofit growth sectors, which specifically talks about already developed areas essentially being redeveloped. So in other words, right now, we're in the redevelopment stages of these corridors. In your packets, I provided some detailed information about present development along 102 and 28, as well as some detailed information about the true impacts to each individual parcel throughout both corridors. Again, this is intended to be a discussion with the board this evening. I'm happy to walk through that document with you if you think that would be helpful, or if you've reviewed it and you have questions. I'm happy to do that as well.
How's the board feel? Do you like to have staff go through it? I'm getting some nods. Yes, yes, Kelly.
We can go right to questions if you want. I don't care.
I think there's some members that want to hear from Kelly.
So just to cover the allowed uses, this is with respect to the 102 overlay district. So right now, the allowed uses are business center development, professional offices, restaurants, cafes, retail, educational institutions, and recreational areas, and assisted living facilities. The map that I have up on the screen now obviously shows you the 102 corridor, and then again, the specific parcels within that corridor and the overlay district. So not every parcel along 102 is actually in this overlay district. It's these specifically identified parcels. Within that corridor, there are multiple zoning districts underneath that performance overlay. That includes C1, C2, C3, and the industrial 2 zone. So if we remove the overlay district, the underlying zoning would be the zoning for that area, for the parcels. That would not change. The table, table one in the packet of information, goes over, again, the allowed uses within the 102 overlay district, whether that be permitted by right, permitted by conditional use, or by special exception. This is more just a visual of what I highlighted as permitted uses earlier. So we used our GIS to help visualize kind of the development that's occurred, and then try to assess what potential redevelopment could occur within... and then try to assess what potential redevelopment could occur within both of these corridors. So 10 lots, and again, this is a 102 overlay, were identified to be undeveloped. And the total area of those parcels is 31.3 acres. The zoning districts within that acreage is residential and commercial, both C1, C2, and C3. An additional 15 lots for a total of 238 acres across five different zoning districts were determined to be underutilized in some way. So that's a good indication of what these overlay districts are impacting. So basically, we have a significant amount of land that's being underutilized as a result of the overlay districts. And stop me at any time if you have questions. I don't want to.
Any questions at this point? Everyone is content so far and understanding.
So the 28 overlay district, so now we're in the north part of town, consists of the commercial 1 and 2 districts, the agricultural residential district, and the multifamily residential district. So again, when we remove that overlay district, these would be the zoning districts that remain. So it falls to the underlying zoning. Same concept to the table. These are, again, the zoning districts that would exist upon removal of the overlay. And then, as you can see, the allowed uses, that being assisted living facilities, multifamily, mixed use, sorry, multifamily workforce, not mixed use, recreation, religious facilities, and retail sales, professional office, again, either being permitted by right or CUP. So similar scenario in the 28 area. There are about 32 acres that are underutilized, totaling 10 lots. Again, these are in the, would be in the commercial 1 and 2 zoning districts. So again, that's an indication that this overlay is not allowing for, I think, what we would like to see going forward in terms of redevelopment. It's more prohibitive than helpful in these instances. So the, like I mentioned, we used our GIS system to break down each individual parcel to give you an indication at the parcel level, individual parcel level, about what's developed, what's underutilized, what's utilized to its maximum potential. I'm happy to answer specific questions about the parcels. I don't, I don't think it's beneficial for me to read every single parcel. I'm happy to answer questions about that.
We can do that. And I think anyone is interested, can, is this going to be on our webpage so people can go look at it?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. And I think just, I find it most helpful to give examples of instances where these districts haven't worked since we're trying to propose removal of them. So most recently, you recall the 215 Rockingham Road project. That's the 16-unit multifamily development that the board approved. So that's in the 28 overlay district. That particular project is actually two parcels, which are now merged. That project had to undergo relief or receive relief specific to the overlay dimensional requirements that are, that were imposed on the property. If they didn't get that relief or have items waived in that regard, the project likely wouldn't have happened. That's a perfect example of a good redevelopment of a property that was able to get through the process, but it was not very streamlined. It was not necessarily smooth. And that was a direct result of having the 28 overlay district in place. There are other examples of parcels that haven't come forward with a proposal yet that have that same potential. And so I think that what I've heard from the board and others is that we, you know, we'd like to allow for that redevelopment to continue to occur, especially in the 28 and 102 overlay areas. I think we've all seen, you know, traveling to exit 5, it's not the prettiest part of town. That being said, there is potential there. There's potential for that redevelopment to occur. And this is a step in the right direction to allow for that process to happen.
Some good old Americana up there, so.
Excuse me, what did you say, Art? I missed what you said.
Oh, good old Americana.
Well, you know, that's also a means of checks and balances, too.
You all set, Anne?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, Tony?
So this was a lot of work that you all did. I don't know who exactly did everything, but this was a lot of work. This is a bunch of hours you have into this thing. And I get, I understand completely what you're trying to do, but I'm totally plugged in. So for the general public, what's wrong with what we have right now? And how does this change affect what we used to have? Just in plain talk. You talked about underutilization, but no one knows what that is, except me and you. So could you, could you help me out with that?
So the overlay districts impose additional dimensional requirements. So when I say that, I mean landscape, additional landscape buffers, additional setbacks, setback requirements that directly relate to the height of a building in addition to those layers of regulation that come with the overlay districts. The parcels that we have to work with in both of these corridors are restricted even further simply just from a natural standpoint, meaning the ones that are left are wet. There are smaller parcels. And so having that additional dimensional restriction essentially makes them, it makes them underutilized. It makes it very challenging to develop without significant zoning relief.
So in even plainer talks, I'm going to go down one more step. So it's, so what we have currently in place in our regulations, or whatever it's called, the system that we have in place now makes it very hard for somebody to build anything on. And if they were going to build something on it because of all of this stuff that we have built into it, it's going to make it more expensive. Are those two fair statements?
Potential, yes.
Harder to build and probably more expensive.
I think that's to a certain degree, yes. Because I know back in, you know, 2022, that it's 2002. Around 2000, there were pressures, especially big box stores having interest in 102, especially the exit 5 area. And members of the public were kind of making demands upon the planning board to have a building moratorium, just to stop all development, period. But, I mean, we had been through growth management before. And the state statutes that deal with growth management only talk about residential growth, not about commercial or industrial growth. So what the planning board thought best was to look at the situation, review what we can do. And there seemed to be at least support, even from some of the landowners at that time, for the POD. You know, it allowed them to do a little more, you know, creativity with development. But the main thing it did, slow things down. And we kind of were looking at a certain appearance and everything to, you know, keep Lundondary looking Lundondary.
So is it?
But it was only going to be temporary, until we got our act together.
Temporary was a lot of years.
Yes, 20 years, actually 21 years.
21 years, yeah.
To be exact.
So as a result of those two things, harder to build on and therefore more expensive. So the system that we have currently in place also is making it harder for the town to collect revenue on those parcels, or to completely utilize the potential revenue of the parcel. Because all the provisions that's on that parcel of land are so restrictive, no one's building on it. Or what's being built on it is less than what it could be if we relieved some of these measures.
Correct, underutilized.
Exactly. So by doing, by relieving this overlay district, the town, the town of Lundondary has a chance to increase its revenue. Increasing revenue could help with the tax rate.
Absolutely.
I'm not going to say it can't, it will. I'm saying it can. It could possibly.
Spending is part of the equation there.
But that's how it's all, that's how it's all tied together, right? Are those fair statements?
Right. I mean, and I think to your point about, you know, revenue and trying to balance residential and commercial, these areas are primarily, they're commercial industrial areas. So there are very few lots within these areas that are AR1.
And understand, I understand this. There's a lot of people that are watching right now that have absolutely no idea what this presentation is about. And when they see these slides on the website, they're still not going to understand it. And so all I'm trying to do is break it down to common terms to help people understand what it is that's trying to happen here. So thank you very much. I know this was a lot of work.
Because like trying to explain what we're doing 20 years ago was not an easy task. And all I can say is that times have certainly changed over 20 years. The demands are different upon, you know, growth and development in Lundondary. And I think any investment company in their right mind would not invest in a big box store or shopping malls, that type of thing. Anywhere seems to definitely be passe in some of the articles that I've read about it. It definitely is not in favor, so. I think one of the things with government, we're always a step behind the public. Public is doing stuff and we just merely react to it. And we got way behind on this. It should have been done. We did have an attempt in 19, but it also was going to take the POD off, but also make changes with the other three, actually four, commercial zones. And that ended up being very confusing.
Yeah, got too complicated.
Some of the landowners wanted it, some of it didn't, and therefore it kind of left the board as, don't do anything. Let's take another look at it. We never got around to it till now.
I think one of the key points, too, for the general public is to understand, it was a little bit glossed over, but to understand that the overlay district is on top of the underlying zoning. And when the overlay district is removed, the underlying zoning is still in force. All those rules and regulations and whatever for the underlying zoning is still there. It's not unzoned. It's just a top layer of restrictions is being taken off.
So this doesn't turn into the wild west?
Correct, yeah.
With the POD on there, we had to satisfy the requirements of the POD and the underlying zone. So now we take the POD off, I think it just, you know, is much easier to, you know, probably lends their creativity a little bit more on what.
And then just to that same kind of point is that the existing development, as it is today, also remains there, you know. Whether we remove the overlay or not, what exists remains. That's not going to change in terms of existing structures and development.
And sure, it is better for the town, cut and dry, just like that. I have no problem doing it.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'm all set, Mr. Chair. You know, it's important for people to understand what the last thing Tony kind of mentioned on was that there is still zoning there. We're just peeling a layer off. You know, I can, I can understand that with dimensional requirements, there's some really small lots here. You know, your actual building, buildable envelope inside of these lots is so small that you can't put a doghouse on it. So I understand it. And thank you, Kelly.
Listen.
This seems reasonable.
Have you solicited any feedback from the property owners on making this change?
Not beyond what I've heard from preliminary meetings from the property owners that have come in for potential development. But through this amendment process, each individual property owner will receive an rebuttal notice and have the opportunity to attend the hearing and speak.
Okay. I'm all set. Anything else, Tony?
So to, just to hammer home the point, and the town council has said this on several times, this isn't cast in stone. Nothing's been done yet. This is a discussion. There's going to be public hearings, yes, and there's going to be a lot of other discussion that's going to happen. This is just a workshop where planners are discussing potential.
Step one to get to a public input.
Exactly, so.
We've got to get our act together first, so then we can present to the public.
So I just want to throw that out there because the phones are going to be ringing.
Oh, yes. Ian, you have anything else?
No, I'm just talking to myself here, looking at it.
Okay, so we can, we'll proceed to a public hearing then, which will be the second Wednesday in December, which I believe is December 13th?
That's correct.
Okay. So we'll have a public hearing. We'll solicit the property owners in particular, but there will also be a regular warning that goes out, the two-week warning for a public hearing. And we will hold a public hearing. We'll make a recommendation to the town council. The town council will have two readings audit. The first reading, they introduce it. The second reading, they will hold a public hearing. So there'll be two public hearings on this. Unless we decide to have another public hearing, if we make changes to what we are presented, or same with the town council. So we will proceed with a public hearing on this on the 13th of December. Okay.
Is there a second one?
Yes, floodplain development. And this is pretty much boilerplate from the federal government that each community that is part of the floodplain planning adopts.
Yes, so. So when a community participates in the national flood insurance program, we're required to have a floodplain management ordinance. And we're required to have that ordinance meet the minimum federal regulatory requirements. And all of that is so that we can allow any property owner that needs it or wants to have flood insurance and continue our participation in the national flood insurance program. So right now, the state is working with FEMA to put out the floodplain maps, the regulatory floodplain maps. They're in a preliminary stage right now. And so whenever that occurs, the state looks at each community's floodplain management ordinance and then notifies us of any required changes so that when the FEMA maps are finalized, we're already in compliance and we're already in a position where we can continue to have our residents keep their flood insurance policies. So it's, again, it's essentially boilerplate language. It's revising a couple of definitions within our existing floodplain management ordinance, adding some definitions, again, all to meet the minimum requirements of the federal floodplain regulations. So I've provided the red line document, if you will. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Another quite clear, well-presented document. Thank you, Kelly. So I will go through the board again. I'll start with Anne.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Nope. So this is just housekeeping to meet state and federal regulations, to update what we currently have so that citizens of Lundondary can apply for insurance. And we've done everything we can from the municipal side of the, yes?
Yes, and I just want to emphasize that if we don't keep up with the minimum requirements, then as a community participating in the NFIP, we get put on notice. then as a community participating in the NFIP, we get put on notice, residents are notified that they can't continue with their existing policies, it becomes quite an issue, so this is important.
Yeah, it's like what we had for the building code several months ago that the state had adopted, and towns and cities follow along with the state does. Lynn?
No questions?
No questions.
Well set, Mr. Chair.
No questions, thank you.
You're all set, so we will proceed to a public hearing on the thirteenth of December with this also, and that will be going to the town council once we have made a recommendation. And then, I didn't know until I met with Kelly tonight, that definition.
Yes.
Update, just, this is just one definition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so currently, so this amendment is related to adding a use that we currently define in our definitions, but it's not actually in our use table or in any zoning district as a permitted use. So presently, the zoning ordinance includes a definition for hospitals, which I have shown up on the screen, hospital is not listed as a permitted use in the use table or any zoning district, and recently, this has presented a challenge when trying to navigate potential hospital users or developers that want to put in a hospital, because as you can imagine, we don't have an area where they're actually permitted. So in other words, there, hospitals are not permitted right now in Lundendary, because we haven't designated a district in which to allow them.
The only place they're permitted is in the P O D Woodmont Commons.
Thank you, yes. And so what staff is recommending is that we update the ordinance, specifically the use table, to include hospital as a use in the gateway business district. Staff believes this is the best district to put this use in, the district currently has comparable uses, like professional offices, which actually include medical offices, hotels, educational facilities, laboratories, warehouses, et cetera. The gateway business district is also a very specific area of town, it's a smaller defined area, whereas other zoning districts, while they're organized, they are in multiple parts of town, and I'm not so sure that the hospital use would be fitting in those areas, so that's staff's recommendation as a solution to what I kind of view as a formality at this point, given that we have the use defined, it's just a matter of where do we put it?
So this has to go to council, town council?
That's correct, it's a zoning amendment and we'll have to go.
The planning board will have to have a hearing on it, and then it would, they would make a recommendation, then it would go to the town council, just like the last.
Does one more?
Yes, certainly, Tony.
So it was my understanding, I remember from years back, there was an explanation given that may or may not hold water in 2023, because sometimes my brain goes on the wayback machine and things have been updated since then, but I thought that if a use was not on a table anywhere, it didn't mean it couldn't be anywhere, it meant it could be anywhere, it could be everywhere, and I thought that, that's what I remember.
So that's, no, that's not how our ordinance functions, if it's not explicitly cited as a permitted use, it's viewed as not allowed.
It has to be explicit. So if you could send us what the proposed amendment, the verbiage is, Kelly, so the board could.
It's simply adding a.
Just adding the definition.
Yes, it's adding a line to the use table.
So do you need a consensus or a vote?
Right, just adding a line to the table.
Okay.
Do you need consensus or do you need a vote? What do you need?
So this is all fresh off the press, so.
I need a recommendation from the planning board as to how you'd like to proceed.
I think this is a no-brainer.
Yeah.
No-brainer.
We'll proceed to a, with a public hearing on the thirteenth of December.
I know it's not a public hearing, but is there an opportunity to say a few things about this item?
Usually workshop, I don't like to, because it can open a floodgate, so we just work with staff.
The floodgate's pretty small tonight, Mr. Chairman.
A floodgate's a floodgate, so that's, yes, yes, because I know we granted, I think, with our C I P and kind of.
It didn't go well.
Re-tapping, so that's how we've always treated our workshop sessions, is no public input, because basically, the public is not warned about it, the board discusses it.
Could I just ask, is the chair aware that this request has come from a potential user? That this is because we made a.
This is my first exposure to it, Ari, so I have no idea. So I think if there's a project proposal or anything, you'll need to go through conceptual discussion, and that way is at least that you get on the agenda, and it can be, the public is warned that we're having conceptual, even though conceptual, there's still no public input, it's just with the applicant.
We were requesting the zoning change, we have not put a concept for a project before the planning board, I understand what you're saying.
Yes, yeah, because we'll work with Kelly on this, we'll have a public hearing on December thirteenth, and then we could discuss it then.
Is there any opportunity to do that sooner than the thirteenth?
No.
I, just based off of the last workshop we had, Mr. Chair, that turned into public comment, I would say, let's stay away from public comment at a workshop, please.
Yeah, 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 as a rule, I haven't, I did allow it, and it opened a Pandora's box, and I regret doing it at this point, so.
I hope you don't mind the question, I wanted to ask.
Yeah, you end up going down the rat hole, so it doesn't work for either party, because of course, people are watching, and they say, how come I didn't know about it, you know, otherwise they would, it would be here, and that's usually with workshop and conceptual, there's no warning going to the public, you know, for, like there is for a public hearing, so there's no two-week notice.
So then, so in this case, Kelly, would a potential applicant snapshot in time, right now, it's not anywhere, it's not on any chart, doesn't exist, so would a potential applicant need to go to Z B A?
No, so the applicant has used the defined process and the ordinance, which is to have the zoning administrator make essentially a determination or classify the use, that has been done, they've, the zoning administrator classified this as a hospital use, that's how they're defining, they view this use meeting that definition. Part of that classification process included the determination that it's not a permitted use, because it is not part of the permitted uses listed in the.
So even Z B A couldn't help them?
There's potential to appeal that decision, to my knowledge, that is not how the applicant wants to proceed.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out what a potential applicant might or might not be able to do to try and expedite. So the process, the process for this, it's a little bit unprecedented, right, this doesn't happen every day, but the process now is, you have consensus here to do whatever it is you have to do, what is it that you have to do next? What's your next step?
This board needs to make a recommendation to the town council for them to consider when they go through the public hearing process.
And then the town council would do that at their next regular meeting, or whenever they can fit it into their agenda?
Whenever the council has the availability, it makes sense to consider zoning amendment.
And then it would be done, or then they have to do public hearings and?
At the council, typically, it's a first reading and then a hearing, generally, the council waves the first reading and then holds a hearing at the following date.
Okay, so at least a month out, maybe a month and a half?
Potentially, yeah.
Because we have two holidays coming up, so, okay.
All right, the holiday season, and then really to get the sufficient time for the warning, because it has to be fourteen days, the sixth wouldn't work, it'd be the thirteenth would be sufficient time for the public warning to be, that's by statute. Yes, Lynn?
So Kelly, do you know, are you aware if there's any regulations at the state level over letting hospitals build, new hospitals, letting, you know, an organization build in a hospital, you know, kind of looking at the economic necessity to do so in a specific region?
So I'm not aware of a specific regulation that would apply at the municipal level to essentially say, you have to allow for this, as I'm.
So my question's a little bit different than that, so there's a number of hospitals in this local area, you know, you've got the Elliott and C M C and Parkland, you know, who determines the need for a new hospital? Is there any requirement at the state level that a company has to come in and say, here's the need for a new hospital?
I assume there's some criteria at the state level that.
A P U C type.
There's a permitting process, because I know.
It's a needs assessment.
Yes, yeah.
I don't know the specifics of what the state requires in terms of criteria that an applicant would need to present when proposing a hospital, but I would be willing to bet their criteria.
But you probably, you probably have definition issues as well, what is a hospital, what is not a hospital, what is, until something's proposed, is it a hospital by definition or not?
Do I remember an issue like that with Elliott at Lundendary?
That, that end was a, that was a parcel of land in North Lundendary, where they were going to put in a nursing home. Okay? And in the process for the state to make a decision whether they could build there or not, it was opposed by another hospital, and they were refused permission to build.
I remember.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So John Farrell, chairman of the town council, I became aware of this project and everything, I'm not sure if the planning board is actually aware, but the applicant can go straight to the town council and ask for the change in the ordinance, they don't have to come through the planning board in this particular case. So when I became aware of it, and they wanted to go straight to the town council, I advised staff that I don't think that's a very good idea, and that I prefer that they move through the planning board, and that, you know, coming to the council would not really follow the general process that we follow in the past. What I would ask is, is that the planning board would take into consideration that that is the step that was taken, that is the way that the council directed the town manager, and then if there's an opportunity to move this to the first meeting in December, so that, you know, it can be noticed and you can hear it, so that the applicant can try, I try to move this forward, whether it's going to pass or whether it's not, or whatever the case may be, they did want to go around the planning board, not around the planning board, they wanted, they had the opportunity to go directly to the council, and we asked them not to, so I will ask that the board take that into consideration.
Okay, is there sufficient time to do it on the hearing, on the, just the, you know, definition?
At the planning board?
Yes.
You want to have a public hearing at the planning board?
Yes.
I could probably.
Probably have to give it up tomorrow.
It's ten days, so I can swing that for the sixth meeting. But, I mean, as the chairman of the council just said, we don't, it's not a requirement, we don't need to do that, so, but I'll, you know.
Can't we just push it to the town council on the sixth?
In other words, I can't force the applicant to come back here on the sixth, if they choose to proceed.
If they want to go to the town council, I mean, that's an option that they have. I don't think it's ever been done.
For one way or another, we're here for, you know, trying to get some consensus of how the board feels about it, I think we should start with that, and to your point.
The votes are here.
To your point, you know, let them go to the council.
Yeah, why are we going through this extra step? Why are we?
I mean, I've just looked at the proposed amendments now, I think Ari very graciously had sent a letter to us, which I'm just catching up on now, we had it a week ago, it would have been even better, but it looks, it looks fine to me, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem.
I'd like to expedite it, and however we have to.
But the only question is, is the public hearings on it, I don't want it to get into a legal entanglement that is incorrect procedure or anything, but.
It seems like, so you recommended coming to the planning board, which is what they're doing.
The council likes process, the council likes transparency, the council likes to have the applicants follow what everybody else follows, if they're going to come directly to the council, you know, the first thing the council's going to say is, is, why don't you go to the planning board? So that's, when the manager asks for the council's, you know, point of view, the council's point of view is follow the process. My simple request is, is that, is there a way that we can, you know, try to, since the holidays are coming and they're trying to move this forward, and it is an applicant that's behind the zoning change, is the planning board amenable to moving it to the sixth? If you're not, don't move it to the sixth, follow your process, don't be influenced by what I'm saying, and I'm not.
Kelly says we can move it to the sixth, so.
Move it to the sixth.
But if we're, so John said to bring it to the planning board, which is what they're doing, if we, as a planning board, are okay with them taking it to the town council.
He wants it to go to the planning board first on the sixth.
No, I know, I understand that, but what, you know.
It is at the planning board.
So you're going to make exceptions for every applicant that comes forward?
That is true, yeah.
We can't make exceptions for every applicant, just because they want to speed something up and void our process.
We're not making an exception, it's here, we're having, we had the discussion, there's consensus that it's a good idea, so let's move it.
You just heard, the chairman of the town council, they want to stick with the process, we can move it to the sixth, that's what we can do.
The process is a public hearing and a recommendation by the planning board, then it goes to the town council.
So on the sixth, a public hearing?
That's the process that we have always done things. And I think where we get into problems is when we don't follow our process.
She just needs a consent, you just need a consensus, so the sixth.
And move it to the sixth and we have a public hearing.
It is, yeah.
You got it.
Just to get this started, and the other, well, all depends upon what we have on the agenda, we could do the other two.
It'll be on there.
We could do the other two public hearings also, lighten the load for the thirteenth, it's time for the holidays. So Kelly, or Ben also, how do you feel on the sixth for a public hearing?
I have no issue with the logistics of noticing it.
Okay, that's the important part, right there, so the board is in agreement, we have a public hearing on the sixth of December.
That's right.
And we'll consider all three, you know, amendments to the zoning.
Yep.
The council will have it for their second meeting in December. Okay, we will proceed. Any other, other business? Sing that.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion to adjourn, take a sec. Second by Jake, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.